There are a few things on the agenda. Under approval of bill and payroll list, there is a payroll, bill and payroll list number nine dash eighteen that will be added. And then under special orders, we'll have resolution eleven dash two thousand nineteen. This is for a traffic light repair.
Okay. We have Dodd-Gu taping for her personal use. April nineteenth supervisor meeting minutes, motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. April twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen workshop meeting minutes?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Can I make a correction? I think, was that the one where we voted on the repairs at lawn? The workshop one? We didn't have the amount on there, and I'm pretty sure we set one in the motion.
The twenty-fourth?
We said, yeah, we did set a not to exceed.
Yeah, and it's not written in the minutes.
We were talking about it.
I don't think there's anything in the minutes. Are you sure that was on the twenty-fourth?
The workshop?
Did I miss it?
Here. The lawn department driveway.
Oh, 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 I thought you said the playground, I'm sorry.
No, sorry, I might've, if you mean the playground, if I did.
If we raised the, we debated what the limit should be, we went with the higher limit that you see.
Okay.
I can add the not to exceed. I don't recall it in my notes, it's probably why I don't have it in my notes.
I thought we were at five thousand. Is that some, like, what we set?
Yeah.
Okay. I will add that.
You okay with that? Motion to approve?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ready? I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, sure, thanks for doing that, I apologize, I got hung up in my office.
Are there changes to the agenda?
Uh-oh. Maybe I'm not ready. Do I have a new agenda here?
No, it's the same agenda.
Bill and payroll nine eighteen.
Oh, is that it?
And then resolution.
Okay, well, you'll remind me of that, yes. Okay, so motion to approve bill and payroll seven nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bill and payroll eight nineteen, all those in, oh, sorry, a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And bill and payroll nine nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Did we skip public input? Did we skip public?
I did, yes.
Oh, I grabbed it on my way in, public input, backing up a moment. Connie Brosnan, you had something about building inspectors.
Yes.
Hi.
Connie Brosnan, fifty-sixth line road. The last meeting that we had, there was a long conversation with the police pertaining to building inspectors, I don't know if you recall that?
Yes.
That being said, I was sort of discouraged with that whole thing, the way that was handled. That, I think, Jack, you went and made a comment saying how, you know, mistakes get made, men at your job, you get mistakes made all the time. However, it wasn't about just a mistake being made, it was about mistakes being made. So a mistake was built on, it wasn't corrected with the building inspectors. Had a mistake been made and corrected, you know, that would've been, you know, acceptable because you don't make mistakes. However, mistakes are costly, and when you make a mistake, I certainly won't want to be the person on the operating table when a doctor's making a mistake. So I just did not, you know, how many people, I have to question now, how many people have not come forward to the board pertaining to mistakes that have been made with the building inspectors? And that's just a very big concern for me, that I don't think we should take it lightly. I think it's really great that the police came and brought all this out in the open, and, I mean, it was a very long discussion. So I just think that, you know, we should really, probably be more on guard with some of the things that pertain to these building inspectors, because quite frankly, the way that whole thing was handled was very poorly handled.
Do either of you have anything from that?
I don't.
Quite common, I think, you know, I think we did take it seriously, we listened for a long time on an issue that was, it really was between the private inspector and the police in a private matter. However, I think we took very seriously how anybody in the township was treated, even though that wasn't, like, it wasn't a township business, then it was a private, you know, contract.
But these aren't the building inspectors.
Right, I think, given that, we have a limited-
The ones that are working for the town.
Right, I guess what I'm saying is, given that, it's good to know, and if people have official, you know, complaints about the township's relationship with them, that would be more appropriate for us to-
And if it would've been corrected, that it was built on.
Handle, yes. Don't disagree, but I, but I do think we listened and took it, you know, seriously and allowed us to kind of keep an eye on things going forward.
Yeah, I hope that's what it's going to be, that's what I'm saying, I hope that's what it's going to continue.
Yep, I think duly noted.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Anyone else that I missed that didn't sign up? Okay, moving on to township manager then.
The township had their annual Three Mile Island training at the township building here for the first time. John Rave led the training, I think everything went very smoothly. I overheard one of the gentlemen, the reviewers, I think it was, he was one of the county reviewers, saying that he was amazed how this room was empty, and by the time, it was within forty-five minutes, we had a fully functioning command center, in case something happened at Three Mile Island, so. It really was very well orchestrated, and it was actually very well attended too, so I'm also thankful for all the volunteers that made that happen. The township had a loss control review, and the insurance company, it's for our liability insurance, they did give us a list of things that needed to be, some things that were more of a mandatory change, and some things we'll suggest are changes, so we'll be working on that. A copy of that letter is on the board desk area. Carriage Park, the road work has begun on Fox and Bridle in Carriage Park. They're looking to pave the road around the plan, correct? And curb repairs have begun, so this is one of the last items left for the board to take dedication of the roads in that development, and that development will be completed.
Yes, Connie?
Tim, I have a question. The township was closed for a couple of days in April?
Yes.
And you attended what?
PSTATs.
Okay, and how many employees attended that, from the township?
Oh, it was the three supervisors and five staff.
Five?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so eight people?
Mm-hmm.
At like, what, a hundred and sixty dollars a person?
I think it was one twenty-five of a person, because I thought it was like one sixty. If you signed up early and early, they gave you a discount?
You got a reduction?
Yeah.
And where did the money, how did we pay for that? What, kidding, was that from?
Under our training.
A training that we budgeted for the year?
Yes.
Okay, and then the week before, you and Dawn Blough attended a, what you said was a free, it was free.
There were several that we attended that were free, and then there was one, I believe it was twenty-five dollars a person for us to attend.
But they're really not free.
The one, yes, the one is, the several that we went to, there was one, and I pulled up the invoice for it, but there was one that we had to pay, I think, twenty-five dollars a person for she and I to go. But the other ones were free, the FEMA trainings that we did.
But, okay, where I'm going with this is that they're really not free because it's whole day's salary. And you're going to these, and how many of these, in the last year, have we, have you or any other employee gone to?
I think they're necessary to keep the township up and low.
To a level?
No, I don't know about to a level, I mean, there are requirements that I need to know what's going on with FEMA updates, just as Scott, you know, the silver department has training that they need to attend on a yearly basis to keep up their continuing education, because there are things that-
Well, when I have spoken to other people in other townships, I don't think they've closed down the whole township, the building for three days and took every employee to, with taxpayer money.
That's their choice, I guess.
There is their choice, and what came of it? Like, what was learned by it?
You could ask each individual, I think everybody-
Have the supervisors talked to each and every person?
No, we sit, you listen, you go to classes about whatever you so choose, they have different topics.
How do you know what they learned and what they brought back and?
Well, I guess you wouldn't unless you asked us what we learned and what classes we took. But I would argue that previously, I want to say, maybe prior to Sean, and I could be wrong, our last manager, did anybody attend PSTATs? Maybe Scott, you would know, were there people attending PSTATs prior to Sean being manager?
It was usually the board, obviously the board, and the township manager, and myself, off and on.
Consistently or not? Just the board and you?
I think I was the only one that was inconsistent around, around the Tom Earnhardt era, I wasn't attending.
Okay.
I wasn't signed up for it.
I guess my, and I didn't know that, but my argument would be, I think there's plenty of things that Glenda, over the years, would've benefited from tremendously, had she had any training. So I think there's been some missed opportunities over the past year for people not attending PSTATs.
I think that you can go to multiple different, that they offer, depending on, based on each person's job description.
I do, yeah, I think we're very-
Did every, like, supervisor go to the same one?
No.
No, I didn't see.
No, I didn't even see.
I couldn't honestly tell you what class they were in.
There's each, there's, there's a lot of things, if you look at the agenda, there's a lot of different things going on, I think that, you know, it's well worth a training. And, you know, as far as, you know, we're lucky in a sense that we're right next to Hershey, so we're not paying for a lot of the townships, and obviously we're paying for hotel rooms and, you know, other things to go to that conference. But, you know, in my opinion, you can be kind of penny wise and pound foolish in this instance, because the training, you know, the training, if taken seriously, and as far as I, as far as I know, everybody takes it seriously, then, you know, it's definitely worthwhile. You get access to experts in a lot of things that you just don't get access to.
Well, Scott, wouldn't it be fair to say that a lot of this is pretty routine, because I've known people that have attended these, and it's pretty much the same thing over and over, and then my whole thing about this is, if you had everyone go to different, you know, wherever, whatever class they were taking, did you all get together then as a township, because it, you know, and discuss any of this stuff, and this person went to this, this person went to that, this supervisor went to this, this supervisor went to that, and as a whole, come and share with one another what was brought to the table from all this?
We typically do that throughout the year in these meetings in our respective areas. Scott takes the information he learns, applies it to the jobs that he put out for bid, and on the recommendation.
Well, that's what I'm asking, I said from the meeting.
No, we do not get together outside of this meeting and talk about township business.
No, like at a, like a, you know, at the, in the township.
We do not.
On the admin side, I will say that we've all shared what we've learned, is one of the first things that, when we get back, you know, after we touch up, like, what did you attend that you got something out of, and, you know, there was a newsletter article or newsletter thing that Samantha was very excited about, and it just gave us new ideas, and sometimes you feel like you're doing the same thing. I think it's more costly if we're not training and understanding our jobs and what's new and, oh, that changed, I think it costs the township a lot more sometimes if you're not keeping up with the training.
There are always changes from year to year. You know, Glenda, you know, pretty much deals with our healthcare and other types of things, and there are always changes in that. There are a lot of, like, good classes for municipal secretaries where things change from year to year that they need to be updated on and know about. Obviously, this MS four program is an ever-changing animal itself.
Well, that is, the MS four.
So there are a ton of MS four classes there, and actually, there are some things that you pick up that could probably easily pay for the hundred and twenty-five dollars you spent in those days, that would save the taxpayers.
Well, how many of these classes do you need in a year's time? Like, how many employees have gone to all these within the last year? Like, how many of these classes?
There's only one PSTATs convention.
That, but then there's, like you, like I said, you went, the week before you and Dawn Blough went to one, and I know Dawn has gone to numerous ones throughout the year.
But again, these are sort of our jobs that we need to keep up on things, there, things are ever-changing, and if we're not defending them, I think we're not doing our job as well.
And I think the ones you guys, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I, the ones you guys go through, go to throughout the year, it's a morning at Leaning County Municipal Building or-
Ninety-five percent of the trainings that we attend on the admin side are free, with the exception of-
Right, but you're not taking the whole day, you're going-
No, no, it's usually two hours.
The morning, or you're going the afternoon, or something of that sort.
Well, she had said Dawn Blough and I, at the last meeting-
Yes.
-attended for the entire day.
That one was an entire day, yes.
And I think, was that the flood-
Rather likely, yes.
And storm water?
And you don't receive anything from the state pertaining to upgrades or anything of that nature?
They'll give you a packet list that, when you go to the class, it kind of cuts it down, like, this is what you as a township need to understand and know, and you can ask questions, you, you know, you don't have that luxury when you're sitting there reading a manual that is constantly changing, so like, I don't know.
But you don't know how many they've attended, like, in the last year?
How many I've attended?
Or any employee?
No, I've never-
Any employee, how many they're going to in a year's time?
No.
Okay.
Anyone else? Yes, Jane?
Just on that subject, that meeting that you went to, since climate change is one of the up and coming topics that all supervisors and managers need to know about, was that one of the topics that was covered at this meeting?
I don't know.
And did anybody attend it?
I did not.
Were there any, was it available?
I don't know.
I think when, when you're talking about township supervisors, obviously, we don't do federal or state policy on energy and climate change, no matter what happens, we have to deal with the ramifications, so when you look at, like, flooding issues or MS four issues or anything else, no matter what you believe philosophically, you know, we're, we're dealing with whatever those programs are that come down from the state and federal government, and that's what we're educated on.
But it all starts from-
Well, again, like, not, not the-
All this level of government has to be responsible for those things, it starts from the bottom and works its way up.
We don't create policy that it deals with that global of an issue. We have to deal, we, we have to, all the programs are designed to what we can face and the policies that we have to abide by, whether that's MS four or, you know, other policies, so.
Anyone else? Moving on to zoning code enforcement officer, she is not here, but I'll just read quick. She did give a report. Permits, there were sixteen issued for zoning, eleven issued for building, and six burn permits. There was one complaint of an illicit discharge upon findings, it looked like it had been there for a long time and no one had witnessed any placement of the illicit discharge. There was also two complaints for high grass and weeds, and three storm water complaints. There is a zoning hearing, a special exception, on May sixteenth at seven PM. The applicant is Flight Path One, requesting a use by special exception of a commercial recreation facility. Let's see, I think that's it. All right, Patrick?
Thank you. There's nothing listed on my report, however, as the board may or may not recall, Sunoco, we entered into a, what we titled, a, an agreement, or roadway agreement and authorization for heavy hauling associated with the Sunoco's work with the pipeline, and that was back in May of two thousand seventeen. Since that point in time, there was, there is a First Amendment, a Second Amendment, and a Third Amendment. One of the amendments had to do with adding a couple of roads or moving the route a little bit. The other two amendments had to do with an extension, and they are again requesting an additional twelve-month extension on that agreement. It would be the Fourth Amendment to the roadway agreement and authorization for heavy hauling. If you recall, associated with the original agreement, they're on the hook for any damage that they do to public roads, they have posted a bond, and they've actually provided the amended, revised, or renewed bond, securing their requirements associated with potential damage to those roads. So we do have a draft Fourth Amendment to the roadway agreement and authorization for heavy hauling, extending it for an additional twelve months. I have spoken with Scott, and he did look out at the roads that they're currently using, and there's a slight concern with the Crowder Road, along, my understanding, if I'm mischaracterizing it, Scott, along the shoulder or the edge of the road, there's some cracking at a certain location that they've looked through, the video from prior to the use and currently, and I've spoken to counsel for Sunoco, who's actually here this evening, and the way to address it, they are on the hook for the damage that they caused to these roads, but since we do have actual knowledge now of potential, some cracking of the road, what I'm going to suggest is that if the board's willing to entertain a motion to approve and authorize the execution of the Fourth Amendment to the roadway agreement, it be conditional upon adding a provision in that agreement, in that Fourth Addendum, to address and at least call out this cracking along Crowder Road, and have Sunoco acknowledge it, and almost reiterate their prior agreement to fix any and all issues associated with their use of the roads.
Okay, do I have a motion to that extent?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, do I have any questions? Yes.
Besides the agreement that if there's any road damage due to the, you know, the pipeline work or whatever, is there any type of money coming from Sunoco to the township just to cover the general wear and tear of, what, are we on the Fourth Amendment, and it's each amendment a year?
Well, you know, the Fourth Amendment, like, I tried to explain, I think the First Amendment had to do with changing the route, so if this, the first one was twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, this would probably be the, the third extension one, meaning that they've been in operation for two years, and this would be basically the third year. In that original agreement, did call out the fact that they are responsible for a number of things with respect to the maintenance of those roads, any damage that they, you know, do to those roads, and they posted the bond to secure those obligations.
So nothing as far as the general wear and tear, rather than increased traffic over the year?
No, I believe that's all called out in that original agreement, yeah. This is just, it just so happened that when they requested this additional extension, I said, why don't you guys take a look at me? Every time they've asked the group extension, I said, check the roads, make sure there's nothing askew, and this is the first time that I think you've found some cracking, I don't know the extent of it, but now that we know that, it makes sense to call it out, put them on notice, and include it in the extension.
And we couldn't, correct me if I'm wrong, but we couldn't legally prohibit, like, this, this only applies to heavy haul, you know, all the work they're doing now, like, really, this heavy haul stuff is done, like, all the legal loads that are moving, we couldn't prohibit them any different than we could prohibit anybody else from doing anything.
Is this extension for a particular road, or?
It's for the heavy haul route, which Crowder Road's just one of them, there were, I don't know if I have that in front of me, but it's all called out in the first, the original agreement and the First Addendum to that agreement.
So it's multiple roads?
Yes, yes, there is a plan attached to it showing basically their route that they were taking, permitted to take, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the police department chief.
During the month of April, officers reported on two hundred and twenty-seven incidents, made three criminal arrests, issued eighty-eight traffic citations, three non-traffic citations, and gave forty traffic warnings. Some other things are, National Night Out is scheduled for Tuesday, August sixth. We are still involved in organizing it, however, we're changing the location, because Polmire Borough Police and North Lendanary Police are going to be more involved, so we've chosen a central location of the Polmire Middle School. Also, the school district is going to be involved in participating and organizing and contributing on some of their resources to the event. It'll end up being much less time-consuming for our officers to put together, which is great, I think, for our residents, but it'll still be an excellent event, and also, like I said, involving the other police departments as well. This week is National Police Week, and I just want to give a warning that there is an organization called the National Police Association. I'm not sure what they do, I'm not too familiar with them, but apparently, somebody is making calls and saying it's the National Police Association to solicit funds for police officers or families of fallen police officers. We've got one in the building, and we looked them up on the internet, and it is an organization, they exist, they have an office in Oklahoma, but they do not do phone solicitations, so please do not give them any money. There's, there's local organizations or more well-known national organizations that you can contribute to if you, if you want to. That's all I have.
Will you be putting that on your Facebook, or did you already?
I don't think we did yet, but we will be, much more information will be put out.
Okay.
Right now, pretty much all we know is that it's moving to the middle school.
No, no, I mean, the-
Oh, that?
The-
Oh, I see.
The, not, the unidentified caller, I guess, so to speak.
No, we haven't, but that's an idea, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone, yes, Connie?
So, when you wanted another police officer, and there was all discussion about another police officer, one of the things that I had asked a while back was about patrolling the rails and trails. Now that summer's coming forward and, you know, there's, there's rails and trails, which is amazing, a lot of people on the rails and trails, but is there any police officers of any sort at any time patrolling any of those areas? Or planning to patrol any of those areas?
Are you talking about active patrol?
Because before you said, we don't have enough police for South Lendanary, if we had enough police, and we could go do those things. Now, you did get some more, you did get another police officer, but I'm just asking, I haven't seen anybody out there ever.
Are you talking about foot or bike patrol on the trail?
Bike patrol or, yes, I guess you'd have to do that.
Right.
Because there's people on that trail that, number one, have their dogs running around and know that they're holding their leash, you know, and you ask them, can you please hold your dog, and they say, the dog's mine, and you're supposed to proceed.
Well, we respond to many calls on the trail, and when people call about an aggressive dog-
Well, that's not, I mean, this is routinely the same people all the time.
We're not going to routinely patrol the rail trail just to make sure people have their dogs on a leash. If there's an issue of an aggressive dog, absolutely we'll respond.
But before, weren't you bike, you know, was there a police officer that was actually out biking, ever, on the rails and trails, ever?
Sure.
Yeah, and that's what I'm asking, are you ever going to go and bike on the rail, is someone going to do that?
We would love to, when we have the time and ability, based on manpower, to do that, yes.
But I thought when there was discussion about a new, you know, an extra cop, when we campaigned for the board to get another police officer, you know, you said you'd be able to do that stuff, and it hasn't even happened.
Well, we're, we're trying, we-
And we need another police officer, we don't do that.
When we have overlaps, we have an officer who'll grab the bike and ride in the area of Campbelltown. It's a lot less feasible to put the rack on the bike, put the bike on the rack and go down there, if he only has like a two-hour overlap, and then he might get like thirty minutes of riding.
Well, last summer, how often did it? Did a cop go on that rails and trails at all last summer?
Last summer?
Yeah.
Probably very and frequently.
Yeah. I'm just asking, it's even, you know, now that the trail is being extended, there's just so much more people on that trail, you know, I'm not saying, oh, weekly, somebody needs to be on that trail, but I mean, we're talking like an entire summer, no one was really even on that trail last year.
Okay, if we are, like I said, if we are told that there are problems-
You're only going to go there for the problem? You're not going to like-
We do the best with what we can, trust me.
Okay, well, sad to say that I was one of those people that actually campaigned for another police officer, and what we were promised never even came to pass.
Well, and we greatly needed another police officer, and we have to set priorities of what is, you know-
So still not enough, not enough one police officer?
Probably not.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, moving on to Public Works, do you have something to report?
I will speak under new business for the road.
Okay. Polmire Library, is anybody here? I don't see Kendra.
I have a Kendra, she does not even care, she has a daughter. The Polmire Library Board of Directors met on Tuesday, April sixteenth, and will meet this month, Tuesday, May twenty-first. The library held its annual springtime in the Vineyard fundraiser, and it raised fifteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighty-two cents. The library held its annual springtime in the Vineyard fundraiser and it raised $15,465.82. The library's annual book sale is scheduled for Saturday, July 13th through Thursday, July 18th at Palmyra First Methodist Church at 520 East First Street. Donations of books are still being accepted at the library. Circulation of material decreased slightly in March, but library visitors increased slightly. The library director has scheduled visits to the Northside Elementary, Forge Elementary, High Elementary, and Lingo Elementary from May 9th through May 17th to present information on summer learning and tutoring.
Thank you. Campbelltown Fire Department?
Yeah, for the month of April, we had 49 calls, eight personnel per call, average response time was 3 minutes and 27 seconds. We had seven building fires, one brush fire, one gas leak, 13 medical assists, three vehicle accidents with injuries, three without injuries, one elevator rescue, three power lines down, one public service. We assisted the police department three times, eight times dispatched and canceled, one incident no found, two AFAs and two carbon monoxide, and that's it.
Thank you. Jack, do you have ones?
So 12 fire calls for the month, five dispatch canceled around, two structure fires, three tree-on-wire incidents, a public service, no incident found. We had 90 EMS calls, 64 of those here to South Lendanary, 42 patient transports, and they missed five calls while they were out on other calls.
Okay, thank you. John is here, did you have anything to report?
Yeah, good.
All right.
I have a list.
Great.
My name's John Greed, I'm the EMA coordinator. Been a busy couple of weeks here, not in the bad sense, but we got a lot accomplished. On April 10th, we conducted a tabletop exercise here in a municipal building to see how this facility would work out for the use of the TMI exercise. We learned a lot, we realized it's going to, it works out much better than over at the fire station because we have a lot more room here and actually we have a lot more, better facilities. So that worked out well. On April 14th, I attended the PSAT EMA seminar. The items discussed at that were, the state talked about their efforts to combat cyberterrorism, which is very interesting. There was also quite a bit talked about the volunteer fire service vampire crisis and some suggestions how to ease it, and there were some municipalities there that have been taking some actions to try and alleviate the problem. One of the biggest was they've cooperated with the, one of the, a couple of local school districts to put a firefighter career thing in effect, and I believe Lebanon County is working on the same thing along the same lines. They also, was also very good, the presentation of how to maintain the local emergency management resource notification manual, which I got a lot of good ideas out of, I've been trying to keep it up, but they gave me some really good pointers. And then to wrap the whole thing up in the afternoon, we conducted, conducted a mini tabletop exercise involving flooding in the community, which if all the rain we've been getting and back last July and for the last couple of years, we have experienced quite a bit of flooding around here, so that gave me some really good insights and some things to, to try if unfortunately it happens here again. During the recent power outage, I couldn't remember the date, but I did partially activate the emergency operations center. Fortunately, there were no incidents and the power was restored within a couple of hours, but we were ready in case anything happened. And then, as Jenna had already mentioned, on May 7th, we participated in the TMI by annual exercise. We came through great, no problems, we did impress the inspectors, as we'll already allude to, but again, with our ability to quickly set up the EOC and how everybody worked together for a common cause, and there was no squabbling, we had a few problems, we worked together and solved them. And the inspectors were also kind of impressed that we put together an incident action plan and we actually used it, so they were, they were real happy when they left. I haven't heard anything official, but hearing nothing, no news is good news in this effect. We didn't do nothing wrong because we weren't asked to redo it, which I did find out the next morning they're going to close TMI anyways, so I had a sneaky suspicion it was going to happen. I would like to thank the, my staff in Western Lebanon County Regional EMA, the township staff, both the township fire companies, the police department, and the amateur radio folks for their participation, assistance with the exercise. Most of these folks, they give up their free time and voluntarily put, put forth an extraordinary effort to make the exercise a success, and it was an arousing success. The residents of the township can rest assured that there are folks willing to voluntarily make sacrifices for their safety and welfare, and again, I want to thank everybody that participated in that.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
And what do you do?
I have about 10 to 12 folks that can rely on me.
And are they, are they new? Are they, are they any new people?
Yeah, I do, I have a few, okay.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
Palmyra Area Rec and Park Commission?
Pretty short meeting last month. They did thank us for moving the nets from here, and things seem to be, at least they're scheduling smoothly, and some of them seem to be going well, so, it's a very, very short meeting, and we have one next week, so.
Did you get this letter, response letter after that meeting or before that meeting?
Yeah, after that meeting, so I'm sure it will be...
If this letter comes up, that was in response to our letter?
Correct.
There's a couple of things in here that I thought were incorrect.
There are definitely things that are incorrect.
Specifically, I did ask our staff today if they've ever received a call asking about using or use of the fields.
Correct.
And I spoke to, I asked Scott and Glenda and Jenna and Sam, and none of them have received a call asking to use their fields over the past that they can remember. Sam did say that after Jenna and I met with Tina, there was one call asking about using the fields, she didn't remember the lady's name, but the standard response is, at that point, we had decided we weren't charging a fee or, you know, renting out the fields, so it's first come, first served, so that's one, I don't, I don't know if you reached out or saw any of that.
I, I did not reach out, I figured that this will come up at the, the next meeting most likely. I think what's important to note for folks here, as we went through the agreement with soccer, and there was, we, we had invited the rec commission to come here and, and talk to us.
Part of me wants to just move forward.
Part of me wants to just...
But the other part just absolutely infuriates me.
Well, there's a lot of just blatant lies in it, and that's the problem.
So, I'm sure you know what they are, I just...
I don't.
I was considering attending, but is the meeting tomorrow?
Uh, yeah, I might be going, did I say that, I might, I got confused with the planning commission, probably, it is tomorrow.
I think it's tomorrow, and I think planning commissions moved to Wednesday next.
Right, next week, so...
I can't attend tomorrow, so I guess I'm just, as our representative...
As always, I will represent the township and try to clear up any...
Wonderful.
...misunderstanding between South Lendanary Township and the rec commission. I think we all want to see the rec commission succeed. But I do think, there was a lot of miscommunication that, and yes, that, the response letter is clearly wrong.
Yes. Yeah.
I mean, we sat here, you know, in public and invited the rec commission to come here.
Well, not only that, but Jenna and I sat down with Tina and she blatantly said she had no idea who was using her fields, and that was telling a different story to...
Right.
...other people, so...
Correct.
Anyway.
I will say that the, the other townships don't...
Hang on.
Say someone, oh, sorry.
That's, go ahead.
No, just the, the, the other township, the, the school board in, in Borough, I, I think don't, I think want to get by this because I don't know that they'd be so quick to want to get by if, if they were involved for...
Well, when I asked them, they said they have very little interaction because none of them have any fields. You know, the Borough has no fields, so they have very little interaction with the, with the rec commission other than they share the same building, so...
Right, I mean, I, I, I think, yeah, I'm not sure we're going to be, I'm not sure this is not going to just be a ping pong ball back and forth, again, I want, I want the rec commission obviously to be successful because I'm part of it, but there is some correcting of the record that needs to be, to be done.
I guess that would be my suggestion, is make it, make it known that we dispute the following facts, but in the effort of moving forward, we don't expect a response.
Yeah, I mean, I don't even need a response and I can let it go, I just would like the facts to be accurate.
I will gladly correct the record in terms of the response, and we expect tomorrow's meeting to be a little bit longer.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Does you have a question, Connie?
Yeah, I was, you know, my concern is that, you know, who's actually using the fields? I mean, anybody can show up there and say, oh, we're going to do a game, or, you know, are they having to contact you, or?
There is, we're slowly moving to that reservation system so that if a field is damaged, that we can reach out to somebody to let them know and...
I mean, it sounds like some really big communication issues.
It, it was, I believe.
And this is long gone, this has been going on forever.
Well, yeah, it's been a, it's...
Legally, I thought everything, the solicitor here was supposed to be taking care of all that and everything was legally...
Oh, it is, it is.
Legally, we're, that's what...
Well, they are, it's just, we sent a letter, we felt that the Parks and Recs Committee and North Lendanary, South Lendanary, the Borough, and the school district were unaware of what was going on, and there were rumors getting back to, well, to myself, I'm not sure about Jack and Bill, but different talks of what had happened and what had occurred. So we decided several months ago to have a letter of how the events happened and what occurred and where, where, how it led us to this point, given to North Lendanary, the Borough, school board, and the rec commission. We received a letter back which stated...
From all of them?
From the chairman, Barry Regal.
Of the rec?
Of the rec commission.
Just rec.
Who's also supervisor for North Lendanary.
North Lendanary. So then in his letter, there are inaccurate statements, so I'm not exactly sure, which is why I was trying to express to Bill if he would clarify this again, I guess.
Well, practically past this, like practically with how the fields are being managed and used and things will be mowed and taken care of and, you know, we're dealing with those, we're dealing with those things. This is kind of a ramification of, of what we did, because I guess the, the best way to describe it is, you know, they said they weren't managing our fields at the rec commission, they really were managing our fields and scheduling our fields, which we kind of knew if you looked at it, but we just wanted them to take ownership of that if they were going to do it and continue with the scheduling. They said that was basically too much of a burden, if I can paraphrase, I mean, I am paraphrasing here.
Yeah, we reached out to them.
And they had a meeting.
We had a meeting and Tina presented it, and the way in which it was presented, it seemed like an absolute nightmare to try to do, which is what we brought back, and I guess it would have been May, maybe, that we approved to not, to let the fields continue, and I might have the wrong month, but to let the fields continue being first come, first served.
Yeah, that's what I was going to...
We weren't having any complaints, no one was, there was really no problems whatsoever, and then Lemon Valley Soccer Club approached us in October, whatever, so, anyways, it's just, I'd really like, just like the record to be accurate at Parks and Recs. I've, I've had people tell me that, oh, yeah, I heard you guys just took those fields over and now you're, and I'm like, well, that is not at all what happened, but, you know, so...
I don't know if you remember, I think you were here some, I mean, we took several meetings to decide on the soccer, there was plenty of time for them to come here and they were invited here so we could, like, figure this all out in a public setting, and they, they did not do, they did not take advantage of that, so, I think, you know, move forward. Practically, this is behind us, really, this is just...
Okay. I mean, in practice, it is, it's working.
Right.
They have Ridge Roads scheduled, they have, we have our fields.
So people are unhappy, but in reality, it's working.
I think people on the, on the rec commission seem un, I don't know, they don't want to acknowledge that, like...
There's very little, the meetings that, I was at two of those meetings, and there's very little discussion, there, it seems that it's just a formality to go through the motions, there's not a whole lot of thought or discussion.
As you've seen from being here, we interact and, and we even question things at, at times that it's just a different type of meeting that, that is, and there's no public, like, I mean, there's, I, I, the only one I ever recall seeing publicly was the soccer.
Right.
I mean, that was it, which I apparently got, so there's no, the meetings are public, there's just no one, no one attends, so there's not very many questions, it's just a very short and very differently run meeting.
So, sorry to take so long, did you have anything else on that?
Nope.
Okay, great. We have minutes from the planning commission, fire board, and historical, you can see on there municipal authority was canceled for May. So moving on, township official input, do you, do you guys have anything?
I don't.
I don't?
No, no.
Okay. Did we want to squeeze in Resolution 11-2019?
Please.
Here, do you mind reading that, Jenna?
No.
I think I stole yours, I have two here.
There was some damage to our traffic light located at 117 and 322 in order for us to, number one, repair the structure that holds the light and move it out of the runway, so it's not as easily hit anymore. We need to pass a resolution, this will be number 11-2019, and, top half of my resolution.
Which one is it? The one, which light are you...
That's brewery.
No.
Where are you moving it?
Just back, because it's hit, it's hit so many times. This last time, it, it actually broke the weld at the bottom and the bolts have bent, and it's, it's hit quite often, and, and the control box is there too, and that, that sustains damage and, and our maintenance company, CMI, said, look, this is just, as you guys know, it isn't hit, and fortunately, we, Nick is there to stop the guy.
It's, it's, the way that road angle's there, it's not a 90 degree turn, it's even sharper, so tractor trailers are popping that curve, you can see the, the tire marks all along the curb at that intersection.
So basically, they said, we're going to have to replace it for safety reasons anyway, because it, it holds the mast that goes out across 322, so while we're replacing it, let's just move it back, so, to stop the madness of getting hit so often.
Wow, okay, that's exciting. Do I have a motion to approve this, or questions prior to?
I'm just curious, like, why this has to be a resolution?
I think the PNDOT requires it.
Just for the permit.
Yeah, you get them in the permit signal permit.
Yeah, and, and remember, I mean, this, I've seen this form resolution a lot from PNDOT, but also, when you do these changes to the traffic, it's, if you look at the application for traffic signal approval, there's always that long certification of things that you're agreeing to indemnifying PNDOT, agreeing to be responsible for the signal. If you own this signal, chances are you've already been responsible for it anyway.
And, and Jack, the resolution allows Jenna as a township manager the son application to, so you're designating Jenna the son application.
Traffic light don't work is your problem, Jenna.
Flagger.
I motion approve.
Okay, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Do I have any other questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I just had a question, Scott, so this, you think this will be covered out of the main, what, the cost above and beyond the repair to move it, you'll have, be able to cover out of the maintenance budget, or how? You thinking that'll, we'll have to discuss that when we get, for the course?
I don't know, did we get a quote?
Well, CMI is still working on the quote, but my understanding is the bolt pattern on the mast, even if you could take the mast down, you would have to redig the footer anyway because the bolt patterns don't match anymore. because the bolt patterns don't match anymore.
Right.
And so, moving it back five feet, that's going to be probably covered by the, I guess, whatever money is from the insurance. Only real cost to the township would be five additional feet of the mast arm coming out because that wouldn't be covered. So, it would be, it should be a minimal cost to the township. But CMI is still working on that number.
And we have five feet?
We're working out the difference because Nick was able to track down the tractor trailer, so we're coming up with a difference for the damage, a fair, a fair cost.
I'd say the dog smell it. Yeah, reportable.
Okay.
Right, it was a reportable?
No.
Was it? Okay.
Yeah, because the, the truck was drivable, he just, he had a flat tire, he just had it have repaired, but there was no injury, vehicle wasn't disabled, somewhere couldn't be driven, tire change doesn't count, so it was unreportable.
Okay, any other questions? Oh, I thought I heard Patrick make a noise.
No, I'm gonna follow with Jenna because we'll see how the insurance, if you have the insurance company, yeah, we'll have to find that out.
Okay.
Is there an incident? I don't know if there's an incident report, we'll, we'll follow up.
Yeah, there was.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to the subdivision Saldau Review 1-2019. Do you want to speak on this, Frank?
So, within your packet, you have information on the final minor subdivision plan for Richard and Marlene Martin and Larry Christine Schuman. This is a pretty straightforward plan. What is proposed is just basically a land slot between two property owners to kind of straighten out the common property line. If you can see what we call the lightning bolts or the Z's, and it would be lot addition A, lot addition B and lot addition C. Lot addition A and B is being added to the Martin property, lot addition C is being added to the Schuman property. They have submitted with application, right-of-way dedication easement agree and other easement agreements and Patrick, I'm not sure if you had a chance to kind of take a look at that?
I, I all have questions, because what I have are little, looks like little, little sheets. I'm trying to make sense of what they're dedicating to who. If you have an extra full plan, it doesn't, it could even just be a 11 by 17.
I can get you.
So, as Patrick is looking at that, in our April 30th review identified as review number three, we have three outstanding comments. One, that the plan needs to be signed and notarized. The second, if you recall, at the last supervisor's meeting, you approved a non-building waiver and the planning commission approved that at the planning commission meeting, so if it has been sent down to DDP, that just needs to be transmitted to DDP. And then the access easements and the dedicated right-of-way exhibits and descriptions need to be reviewed by the township solicitor and ultimately recorded with this plan. So, I would consider them to be administrative type comments and the plan is in position to be acted on this evening. One additional tidbit, the South Anvil Township, South Lindonary Township line cuts through the Martin property and the Schuman property. This plan was submitted to South Anvil Township and they deferred approval to South Lindonary Township, so that has been addressed in South, in South Anvil.
Okay.
So, the easement, I'm looking at this, the access easements that you have the legal descriptions, they're not, are they to the township? They're to the private for access to the properties? Because this looks like an access driveway.
That's right.
And these little blips of description are to that access driveway?
That's correct.
So, the township's not going to be...
It will just be recorded with the plan as a recordable document.
All right, it's ensuring that this, this lot, right, maintains access.
Which lot is?
Lot...
The Schuman property?
The Schuman property, yes.
No, he's on.
And then, yeah, and then on the Martin property...
Does that, these easements come up, like, it's like that little, that little blip, that little blip, so it's this driveway. And this has frontage, so I can assume we're...
So, this is Mount Pleasant, on South Mount Pleasant Road. The one easement is going to be this access, access drive that travels down along the northern property line, it kind of zigzags onto the Martin property. So, it would determine that wherever that access drive went on to the Martin property, they were going to grant an access easement to allow continued access.
Access back here.
Yeah, back here.
Okay.
And then the right-of-way dedication would be to the township.
That's, so, the only dedication to the township is going to be your typical right-of-way along South Mount Pleasant Road. Do we have those descriptions?
Yeah, it should be in there too.
That's going to be a shared driveway use?
No, it's existing already. And this is just a lot addition, there's no additional driveways.
Just make sure they can keep...
Yeah, just to make sure that, you know, when you have these opportunities to secure access to other properties, especially if it zigzags on to, you know, another property, it's always good planning to secure that access. Right now, neighbors get along, but you don't know what will happen in the future and somebody might decide to put a barricade up.
Or someone else buys it.
That's right.
I don't have the descriptions or anything for the right-of-way, so just get some of that stuff. I have the private easements that are being dedicated associated with your access road, but I don't have anything with respect to the legals for the right-of-way to the township along South Mount Pleasant Road. That's the only easement necessary to the township, correct? There's no other utilities?
No. I'll get with, um, under the engineer.
We can approve it pending...
You're gonna, if you entertain a motion to approve it, it'll be conditional upon the comments within the engineer's review letter and I believe that's one of the comments we have, I just don't have it.
Yeah, it is, yep.
Patrick, I said you need them with those in, because I think, I said you have what I had, right?
Yeah, this is, I printed out what I had.
I didn't receive something and I didn't pass them to you.
Okay. Okay, do I have a motion for this?
I make a motion that we approve contingent upon the conditions in the engineer's letter.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any questions? Patrick?
One more question. And I, I, I was looking at the plan, I think, when you were talking about it, this does border, it kind of split actually more so on South Lindonary, portion of it is in South Anvil Township. Is there a plan pending in South Anvil?
They defer.
Go ahead, no, you go.
No, they deferred to us, they took action for it.
I missed that, I think I was...
You were looking at, yeah. Anything else? Okay, all those in favor, aye? All right, moving on to road projects, bid acceptance. Scott, do you want to lead this?
Sure, thank you. We went out for bids for various road work, which to include base repair, binder paving and wear and paving of three roads in the township, West Patrick Road, Stoffer Church Road and East Patrick Road. That bid period ended yesterday at noon and the results of the bids are as follows. I'll, I'll start with the highest bid and move down to the low bidder. The first bid was from Pennsy Supply and that was $536,588.44. New Enterprise Stone, $503,414.50. The low bidder was Landis, Depp and Sons and that's a division of H and K and their bid was $486,985.30. And tonight, I would ask the board to consider authorization, approval of, of the low bidder for those roads. And then at which time I would issue a notice to proceed and ask for their remaining bonds or, with comp documents, insurance certificates and various documents to execute the contract. And I just do want to add that we typically pay for our road work out of liquid fuels fund. This amount exceeds what we have in that account, but we do keep, we do put $60,000 in the budget for contingencies, winter contingencies, so there, there were some conditions, the quantities were increased a little bit on East Patrick and West Patrick due to some of the winter conditions. So, in speaking with Jenna, we were looking at possibly tapping into that $60,000 to make up the difference. There's approximately a shortage of $37,485 in liquid fuels, so, do you think that we, we wanted to keep something in liquid fuels, $10,000 or so?
Just to keep the accounts in, don't want to drain the entire account, so, using the remaining of the $60,000 from the winter maintenance, which would be, what's it, 40, 47,000? We leave $10,000 in liquid fuels.
Right.
So, we would leave $10,000 in liquid fuels and then use 47,000. Right now, we're at 58,000 or 58,000 left in the winter maintenance budget.
Is there any, any projects left that have to come out of that budget?
Anything, anything remaining that would come out of there?
All those things, yeah.
Well...
That we're dealing with.
The only other times we tap into that would be for sinkhole repairs, so that's...
We also have a, an account for sinkhole repairs.
Do you know what the balance of that is?
I, I guess we're asking like other, other things from winter would have already been taken care of or already taken into account.
Out of the winter road repairs, line item.
Budget for, and we have that planned for some other work on East Patrick and milling out, doing some base repairs.
Okay. Right, that's what I was thinking, okay, we have enough for that.
Right.
How confident are you in the quantity, Scott?
Well, you know, especially the base repair is an estimate, so...
That's the only thing concerns me running so, you know, running so close to the top of the ladder, you know, should...
I mean, it could go either way. I, I generally am conservative in that and make my quantities higher, so I, I'm hoping it comes in actually less than this bid.
What's the 10 square yards of remove existing and then it's cut off on number four?
That was just a little bit of extra winter damage to Stoffer's Church.
I was just wondering.
10 square yard, yeah.
Because the quantity was so low.
And, and looking at it, that may not even happen, it was just in there so I could get it in the bid.
Yes, yeah, unit price.
Yeah, when we, yeah.
Yes, Connie?
So, Scott, it's necessary to do all this work this year? We can't just do what the funds allow at this point and budget for something next year?
In, in consideration of the roads that we're looking at, West Patrick and East Patrick, yeah, they're, they're in not real good shape right now and I think we'd be paying a lot more if we didn't do that work this year. I think if they would go through another winter, we'd be paying more.
I mean, I'm sure that there is a road that is the, you know, real bad, and I'm saying, based on, we're doing the entire road or, is that we're doing, we're doing the entire road?
We are doing base repair where the road's broken up. There are various sections where you want to milling head over it, dig down, mill out maybe five inches and put paving back in and then there would be a binder overlay of three inches. We did exactly the same thing on Harvest Road and it turned out, turned out well. So, you fix the base and the structure of the road, so you don't have to come back again and do that and put three inches on and then an inch head overlay on top of that.
So, Patrick Road being very bad, you're saying, but I mean, we're talking about...
In sections, yeah.
Yeah, and we, and we have to do it all? That's what I'm saying, is there any way that costs efficiently that we could just work with thinking what we got, what the money, what money we have here?
There's, there's money there, I mean, historically, the Liquid Fuels Fund is not...
Next year, we need money for, to do more.
Well, and then the money comes into Liquid Fuels Fund next year.
Right, it's not like this account is gone forever. Liquid Fuels Fund is replenished.
And West Patrick keeps getting put off because it's such a big load.
Well, I'm not saying about getting, I mean, West Patrick can be done.
It's only, you have West Patrick, that's the monster, that's, you know, that's, what, 100,000, 181,000? That's, that's three quarters, three quarters of the amount is one road.
And I think, Jack, you went through, we went through all these roads and the conditions and kind of, you know, we, we had meetings about this and planned it out. I know you were asked by this board to provide a lot more info.
Sure.
To, to get to this, this point, so...
Any other questions? Jack, did you have anything else?
I don't know.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve? Someone? Some company or a company?
I make a motion that we award the project as printed here to Landis, Depp and Sons for a contract price of $486,985.30.
Do I have a second? Any other questions? All those in favor, aye?
I just got a question, are you doing the notes here, Jenna?
Yes.
Are you writing down in the notes that exactly what's discussed here as far as that we're taking it from a different fund?
That was not part of the motion.
Yeah, see, that's the kind of thing that concerns me about, there's never, ever with these minutes, you know, you can't even go back to exactly what's being discussed here. That we're going in and taking money from a different, there's no resources to go, you know, because it's not writing these minutes exactly what was just discussed here. Like, I'm, what I'm saying is...
Well, you're not going to write verbatim what is happening in the meeting, you're going to write the actions that are taken.
Okay, we're taking money from a B fund to...
Yeah, the motion, as I understood it, was to approve the low bid as set forth by Scott associated with the bid responses.
Right.
Where the money comes from, some of that's subject to the budget, I mean, you got the liquid fuels, but there was discussion with respect to taking some leftover from the, I guess, what was the winter maintenance?
Which part of this work is exactly that? I mean, the winter maintenance, we're not, we're not taking it from the...
Capital Reserve.
Capital Reserve.
MS4.
MS4 funds.
I didn't say that, what I said, it was just approved. It had to be approved, am I correct, Patrick?
Yeah.
And they had to say, they had to approve it to say that we want to take it from this fund?
No, not if the, not if the money is coming from a fund that's used for purposes of maintenance of roads. Now, if you want the minutes to reflect that there was discussion and the consensus of the board was okay.
That's what I'm asking.
Segregating out, you know, you can do that.
That's what I lose, yes.
That wasn't the motion that I heard, though. I have to record the motion.
I'm not telling you to change the motion.
Oh, okay, okay.
I'm telling you, if you want the minutes to reflect that there was a discussion as to where the money is coming from, you can, but my understanding is that both the funds that we talked that were discussed are applicable to what's being done.
Okay, so, moving on to the emergency call response, Township employees. I guess in an effort to continue getting some more, I'm not exactly sure how I want to explain this, but in an effort to help the fire departments, am I explaining that right? Get more responses during the day, potentially those employees at the township that are in good standing at local companies. We were asked if that would be something that would be allowable. So, Patrick has written up a document that outlines when and how that's appropriate.
I was not here when you discussed it, but I did, Jenna reached out to me and let me know that you talked about this and from my point of view, you'll, you'll, you know, there's a draft policy and a draft MOU before you. And the policy would be basically the township's policy with respect to employees that are members in good standing of volunteer fire companies and it's a, it would be a potential policy of the township allowing those employees in the event of a fire or emergency call during work hours, allowing the employee to respond with, you know, there's a couple of conditions in here that need to be met during those hours and it... And it, you know, some of, from my perspective, you want to make sure that it's clear that when they respond, they're no longer working within the scope of their employment of Southland Dairy Township, that they're, you know, responding as a member of the volunteer fire company. And the MOU is similarly with the fire department, having the fire department acknowledge and provide, provide the proof that they're, number one, the individuals are a member of good standing, number two, that they've provided and continue to have workers' comp to ensure those individuals' general liability insurance, so on and so forth. And that the township's being indemnified and not being held harmless with respect to any of those responders. That was my understanding of the discussion. So I tried to put it down in a policy and an MOU form. Policy again would be something that the township would consider. And this is not, this is just my understanding of what you discussed. So I put it down on paper. You can take away, add to as you see fit, so long as I don't have anything negative to say about it. And then the MOU would be more so having the fire companies acknowledge and agree that, you know, like I just went over, Requiem Insurance, they're acknowledging that when they respond, they're now operating within their position as a, whatever their position is with the fire department. And they're no longer an employee of the township at that point.
Yeah, that, that was discussed. I, I did think, like, if we don't do it as an employer, we're going to ask other, you know, how would we expect anybody else?
And it's still always a voluntary, I mean, there's some of the conditions here. It's all voluntary upon the actual individual. They have to make sure, you know, the manager's okay or whoever their supervisor is okay at that point in time. I mean, they're, if they're in the mid, in, they're in the middle of an activity or task that's, you know, they can't just drop and go. They can't drop and go. I mean, there's a number of conditions that come into play, but. Makes sense?
Thank you.
Am I what?
No, Jack.
Yeah, I think it outlines. It did stem from our, the law and fire company making an official request for the policy. So we know what's expected.
Do I have a motion to approve this? I guess it's not a resolution. It's just a policy?
We want to make this a resolution.
That's another thing I asked Jenna. I don't, I don't know if I've ever done a policy, so to speak, for Southland Dairy Township. So I'm not sure how you've done that in the past. You can do it by resolution. You can do it by, if you have policies.
I'd rather do it by a resolution.
Resolution would make more sense.
We can do it by resolution. I've seen it done a couple of different ways.
But maybe the police department might have a policy. Do you have policy books?
You probably have like standard operating guidelines. So we can, this will be, should be easy enough to put in a resolution format. I just put it in form of a policy.
We just approve it with.
Resolution number?
12-2019 with the condition that Patrick revise.
Well, why don't we, well, let me get it in a resolution format before you adopt the resolution. But it would be, I, I think it'll be easy enough to put in, in the format of a resolution. And then the MOU, like I said, would be something that the individual fire companies would need to sign off on and acknowledge.
You okay with us holding it off until it's done?
I would actually suggest that if we're treating the fire board as the mechanism for, you know, primary communication policy and procedure that we.
Shoot it to them.
Send them both to that. And especially the respective fire companies are going to want to review, review that. But I think, you know, it sounds unanimous here that we're okay with these documents.
Okay, so do we want Patrick to get the resolution form and then we'll send it to the next fire board meeting?
Sounds good.
I can do that. What, I'll, I'll circulate it to the board and Jenna.
Okay.
Okay, next fire board's not till July, so we have. Do I have any questions on that right now?
Probably legally some demand power issues.
Potentially, yeah. Okay.
You're going to table this.
So I think.
Motion to send it to the fire board and the fire department's respective like for a review?
I'll second that. Do I have any other questions? Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
I don't know that matters, Patrick, but I mean, like, I assume, like, the township is legally obligated to provide.
Yes. Well, you're legally obligated to fund the workers' comp under the Workers' Comp Act. But remember, when you have an employee working within their scope of employment for Southland Dairy Township, say when Scott's out working on the roads, if he, if he gets injured, it's subject to the workers' comp of the township.
Right.
If he then runs the road, but then he has to go respond to a fire, goes to a fire, gets hurt at the fire, he's not, he's not going to be subjecting a claim to the township's workers' compensation carrier. He's going to be subjecting it to a fire company's workers' comp.
Regardless of whether he's on the township's payroll at the moment or not.
Correct.
I'm okay with either way. I don't care where they get covered. I mean, it's, it's a necessary service, so.
Right.
I'm just asking for clarification.
And I do think, like you said, it has to be made clear that they're not a township employee at that time or else we're going to pay, like, how we, yeah.
Well, I imagine the rates are different for.
It's drafted and moved forward.
Oh, yeah. As soon as they.
Significantly different.
Carrier too.
It is a different, it's a different carrier because as soon as they, as soon as they made it that, long and short, if you got, if you're in the fire service and you get cancer, you got it from there. All the workman's comp carriers, they kicked them. They won't let it, you know. I think we're probably a swift.
You would swift? That makes some sense. It's where a lot of them are.
Yeah, because no, none of the carriers would take it.
Yeah, that was the thing that one caused.
Yes.
So is, is the township workman's comp coverage different than what the township gives the fire company's workman's comp coverage?
Yeah, as soon as they enacted that, you know, with the whole cancer thing, like, if you're in the fire service and you get cancer, all of the carriers promptly said, we're not covering them anymore. So now you're stuck with the SWIFT, which is state workers insurance run by the state. They're the only ones that'll cover it. All the private carriers said, no way.
Is that national? That they did that or just.
No, state law.
Yeah, I don't know.
State law.
Just curious. Okay.
I mean, other states have it, but it was a state.
I have one question. If, if employees, a firefighter runs to a call, are they getting docked? They'll pay then if they're doing?
No.
All right. I just, I thought that, well, I just want to make sure.
But there's very clear stipulations in here as to what kind of call they can respond to.
Yeah, they're not going to go rescue a cat from a tree. Yeah.
Exactly. Yes.
Yeah, I think we, we just have to make it clear that they're not a paid fire department.
Right. No, I just, I just want to make sure. I, because I, I wanted to, I would hope that they, you know, stay on the, basically get, stay on the clock when they're doing a service for our township.
We tried to, to make it, you know, that they don't have to have a 10-page checklist. Can I go?
Yeah, yeah.
But yet, you know.
But.
Make it enough that, you know, we're not going third due to, you know, it's three counties away to, you know, to haul water to, you know.
So the four.
Yep, no.
Four.
Okay, any other questions on that?
Not a lot, too.
Oh, no. Did I just open up a can of worms?
No, no.
Okay, shoot. Okay. All right, moving on to the back page here. Fire study update? Did you have anything to update us on at this point, John?
Well, TMI's, Rob, I can put some more answers after I was working on it this afternoon.
Yeah, okay.
I'm just going with what I got and moving on from there. I hope that, I'm going to save by the end of the summer. I hope to have it tonight.
Okay.
Hopefully it'll work. I'm digging in myself some heat later.
All right, thank you. HVAC update? Did they come today?
I have tomorrow, 15th. They will be here at 8:30 a.m. I know that James Miller from Perdevia will be here at noon or 11:30-ish to kind of figure out where they're at with it and what's going on and what they're doing with it. So we should have some managers.
Tomorrow. Okay. Township non-uniform employee pension plan? Do we need to table that?
That and the next one.
And the next one?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're tabling both those. The historical commission ordinance review? Do we have any discussion or further? Anything on that? I did poll. I saw that we got the email with the list that they did.
Of the direction they kind of would like to go?
No, the actual list that they made, and this list was probably made shortly after its inception. This list looks very similar to when I used to sit on the historical commission.
That was what they were tasked to do with that within a certain amount of time?
Two years, yeah.
Was there another email that, of the direction they wanted to go? I don't recall that.
There was Cindy Skinner came in and sat down with me and then kind of emailed and said that they wanted to do more of walks through the township, like historical walks and more lectures of that.
Like more education?
Yeah.
I actually like that.
Yeah. They didn't want to step on the historical society's toes, but they thought that this would be a good direction for them to go to. They're all very passionate about the historical commission. They don't want to see it disbanded. So they kind of feel that, they agreed with the board with this list that they had a very hard time going to people and telling them, hey, did you know your house is historic? And the door is shutting because nobody wants to be placed on a list and told what they kind of can't do with their property. So they said they had a hard time with people cooperating or just to have a class or a, a lesson on, hey, your house is historical. If you want to learn about it, this is how you go about doing it. So they were kind of looking to move more in that direction instead of this list.
As I read the ordinance, there really is nothing else in the list of duties in this ordinance besides making this list.
Right, and that's what they'd like to see this changed.
Is this worth a discussion?
A workshop meeting?
Yeah, probably because it brings into the broader discussion of the references made to the historical commission in the zoning ordinance and.
The comp plan.
And the comp plan and everything else.
And we can invite some of the historical commission member or the historical commission.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I mean, I.
Okay.
So we're going to put that on the workshop agenda or a workshop agenda?
A workshop.
Next workshop, what, where am I? I'm in May, the 29th. Do we have anything on this upcoming workshop that we're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of.
Two weeks enough time to look over that info if we poll.
Is that enough time to get the.
Probably not.
Start, yeah, I think maybe.
To give them notice.
All right.
Notice and actually get people here.
All right, so let's move it to June. Can we poll or actually I don't mind polling the page numbers and the references into the zoning ordinance and the comp plan?
Yeah, I like that.
So that way we can get all of our ducks in a row. Would you mind inviting them then to that workshop? Any questions on that from anyone? You don't need a motion for any of that, do you Jenna? Okay. All right, so moving on to good and welfare. One, I just wanted to see, did you mention that there's recording happening?
I did.
Okay. Two, we're going to have an executive meeting after this in regards to personnel issues. And three, I just wanted to also note that planning commission meeting is Wednesday next week, not Tuesday. And because of it being the primary election, so go out and vote on that day.
Speaking of that, I want to remind people that their polling place may have changed.
Yes.
So please, you know, I'm sure there'll be some confusion on election day.
If you got a.
New.
New registration card in the mail, you have a new spot, right?
Yep, and.
So you didn't get a new, you didn't get one, did you?
South of 322, pretty much. It sounds.
I got a new one. So if you got one, it wasn't just routine. It's because you're moved.
Right, so I advise everybody to look at that.
I think you. You're not moved?
We, we are moved, but we didn't get them during the emergency call down today.
Are you serious?
We're emailing them again. We found out.
Because there'll be new lists, so.
We actually get four.
That is going to be a mess.
So.
I already knew because of when.
We talked about.
A couple of weeks ago, yeah.
Yeah, I do think there's going to be some issues that arise because of that. People go to the wrong places. I think anybody working.
Where is the other fund?
The community Bible church by the roundabout.
So it's close. At least if you go the wrong place, you won't have to go very far because it's, but it's north of 322 and south of 22. Basically they split it.
Well, and.
Well, and.
Stone Knoll and Country Squire.
Yeah, I guess I said basically.
You guys didn't move?
No, I think it's.
Oh, okay. My bad.
Yeah, people should, people should check and I, I guess if it's the first time, because it's a new polling place, if it's the first time people are voting there, I'm assuming there probably is for that per ID just because technically it would be everyone's first time voting at the new polling place. So that may cause some issues as well. And there'll be a whole new set, I would imagine, of.
People, right, working it.
So unless they split them up, I'm not sure what they did there, but you might run into some panics with coworkers as well. But for everybody's patience, hopefully, and it all works out.
And I sent an email to Samantha to put on the website who you would be voting for if you lived in Southland Dairy Township. Because I think you did that once before.
I think we, I don't think we did that. We might have placed a link.
I think I saw it once before.
We might have placed a link to that, but we would not list.
Well, if you could put that link on, so.
Why are we putting a link to?
Well, you would just.
What are we putting a link to?
Yeah, that should be sampled back.
You could just go to.
Who would we, I don't think we went. I, I think if you go to the Lebanon County.
Who's available or who the potential, I don't know.
I would, I would advise people go to the.
Democrats or Lebanon County.
Right, which is all on the county elections website. I would advise people go to the elections website rather than Southland Dairy Township.
Yeah, we're not getting involved in that.
And are you running?
Yeah, I don't, am I supposed to answer?
Was it listed and the Republicans?
If you have, you go to the county website.
I hope you listed. All right, so the next supervisor workshop meeting is May 29th. The supervisor regular meeting is June 11th. If we're going to cancel the workshop, we put it on the website. Anything else? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Show me.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, meaning adjourn. I said that. Yep. It was like my, my first thing out of my four things that I put up here. Sleeping.
I was probably trying to understand if she's asking.
Unless it's supposed to be.
They vote.